Good evening, everyone. I call this special, this city council meeting to order. We have a special opening ceremony, and I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember FitzHenry. Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we go to the front, I'd like to explain what we're doing tonight. A lot of people, you know we have a new flag in Richfield? Brand-new city flag. And I thought it's only proper if we've got a brand-new city flag that we bring it in with all the honor and respect it deserves. So we have the color guard from the 130th Composite Squadron and the Civil Air Patrol. So what I'll ask is the council to join me out front here, and then tuck your chairs in if you can. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember?
Thank you. Thanks for helping me out with that pledge. Just a little bit about the 130th Composite Squadron. They're out of Lakeville, but we do have members that live in Richfield, I being one. And then Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Joe Rogat lives in Richfield. And CEP in the 130th Squadron, they have 119 members. They're the largest squadron in the state, with 82 of them being cadets and 37 seniors. Nationally, there's over 57,000 members in the Civil Air Patrol. And just fortunate enough that the 130th is the most decorated squadron within the state. They were 2014 Minnesota Squadron of the Year. In 2015, they received a National Unit Citation. They were Quality Unit of the Year for 2014 and 2015, National Squadron of Merit in 2016. Civil Air Patrol has 24 squadrons throughout the state, based all over, 23 aircraft, and has the largest Cessna fleet in the world, and also the largest radio network. Their missions are aerospace education, cadet programs, and emergency services. And they do 90 percent of the inland search and rescue and save an average of 82 lives a year. They'll probably also be involved in St. Cloud. We've been involved in Fargo in the major incidents. And Civil Air Patrol was the first photo flight over the Twin Towers during 9/11. So they do a lot for our nation, and you look at these young individuals and you just say, "We're in great shape, aren't we?"
Yeah.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
And it's so nice for you to arrange this, so we could have our flag properly brought in. Thank you, Councilmember. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
There's an open forum here. I have several cards. We have an agenda item that is on a lot of these cards, and that will, so we do not bring those to the open forum time. We leave them for the council agenda, and it's up to the discretion of the liaison or the person handling that particular item to decide, this is not a public hearing, whether we will take public comment. So at this time, I have two people who I'd like to ask to come forward. First is Susan Rosenberg.
Thank you for having this open forum. My name is Susan Rosenberg. I am co-chair of the Richfield Beautiful Garden Tour, and I want to talk about that a little bit with you tonight, because it's going to be on July 30th. I don't know, can I put it down here? It's going to be July 30th, from 1 to 5. And this year, we have 10 of the most fabulous gardens that you could imagine. And we, Mary Olufsen and I, we take this as a privilege, that we get to do this for Richfield. This is a gift from us and the garden club to Richfield, because we are showing off absolute stunning beauty to the rest of the city. And people are really anxious for this to go. The maps, it is a self-guided tour, and the maps are going to be on sale starting this Saturday, and they're going to be at all the liquor stores, at the Richfield Community Center, they're going to be at Woodlake Nature Center, and they're going to be at City Hall here. And so we are really excited, because we do have some sponsorships this year, and we are going to have prizes. And the big thing this year that's different is that the participants are going to get to vote for a People's Choice Award. And so we're going to have it, so that the participants can vote, and so instead of a regular garden judging, it's going to be more of a People's Choice. And so that is really going to be fun. And then on August 29th, or 23rd, we're going to bring everybody here. You guys are all going to get to meet them, and we will award our People's Choice Award that night. So again, it's July 30th, from 1 to 5. It's on a Saturday. There are 10 gardens, and we have water features in some of our gardens. We have shade gardens. We have sun gardens. It's just amazing, the kind of beauty that's out there in our community. And I just want to make one really quick thing. I want to thank the Community Development Department with Julie Urban and Kate Adjison. We have teamed up with them. Mary and I have teamed up with them this year, and they have been phenomenal. They have really helped us, and I really appreciate all their support. And so, anyway, I just want to remind everybody, July 30th.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Kathy Klein?
Thank you. As a high school teacher, I'm here again to model what I teach my students, that when you care about an issue, you make your voice heard, and you let your representatives know where you stand. That is how a representative democracy works. But I haven't seen that very much since moving to Richfield more than a decade ago. Our mayor and councilmembers seem to believe that we elected them to exercise their judgment on our behalf. They don't seem, they don't see a need to listen to us, much less to listen respectfully to us, or to be at all responsive to our concerns. And that's what offends me about, among other issues, the band shell.
We're not taking testimony on the band shell at all. You have to stop. You cannot bring this up. This belongs in the, I'll have to ask you to step away.
So I think that goes to the issue of respect? That you won't even hear our voices?
We heard your voices in the public hearing. I'll have to ask somebody to remove you. If you don't know, you have to leave.
No, I won't say the word, I won't say the word "band shell."
You can't. This was not about the band shell. This is not a public hearing. At this, seeing no other things, I'll ask the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 28th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed? The motion carries. Hats off to hometown hits. Councilmember FitzHenry, I'll let you start.
Well, I kind of just did it. I just wanted to make sure that we presented our flag properly and got things done well. And I want to say the Fourth of July was awesome. We ended up with good weather, good conduct by all, and it was probably one of the smoothest exits I've ever seen from the fireworks. You know, we didn't have a whole lot of craziness, so I want to thank all the people who are involved for that. They put on a big show and a good show for Richfield, and I think everything turned out just perfect, so.
Great, great. Councilmember?
Just to follow up on those comments, yeah, I just want to thank all the volunteers and the people that came out over the Fourth. It was just a great weekend from the kids' night. Had people filled up and happy at Veterans Park to the parade, to the fireworks. And only one promise for next year, we'll, Councilmember Elliott and I talked about this, we're going to make sure we've got candy to go the whole route next year.
Ooh, good luck.
You see that every year.
Yeah.
This, we'll deliver on it.
We got within a block and a half of the end.
Better.
That's as close as we've ever been.
Right. Exactly right.
Well, that means you should buy candy, so that...
Right. Take some personal responsibility. My one other comment I was going to mention, we had a really interesting speaker at the Human Rights Commission meeting, Pastor Ben Sandin from the House of Prayer Lutheran Church. You might have seen an article in the Sun Current. They had a really, embarked on a really interesting project to interview hundreds of people throughout Richfield, to try to understand how to build neighborhoods and build community. And one of the things that kept coming up was the, that brings people out into the neighborhood to communicate with, actually is gardening. And they're going to try to host three, what they're calling gardener's markets, where folks can bring some food out of their garden to a market at the church to share, and see what other folks have, and kind of use it as a positive community-building experience. And so that's going to be July 17th at 5:00 PM at the House of Prayer Lutheran Church.
Great, great. Councilmember Garcia?
I also want to talk about the Fourth of July. That was, that was really one of the best ones. And, you know, we have got to keep the Fourth of July going. People really, really enjoy it, and the little kids that were around, there were more, it seems like every year, there's more and more little kids. And we don't want to, you know, we're in jeopardy of losing the parade and the Fourth of July celebration. There will be a meeting this Thursday night at 6:00 PM, and it will be at 7333 Russell. And what we want to do is get enough people together that we can, you know, solicit, what do you call it, volunteers, that are really interested in continuing this legacy that we have. It's been very, very positive, and I thank the folks that have run the parade for the last few years. They've done an outstanding job. But we have to keep it going. The leadership will no longer be there from Katie Robinson, and, no, it's...
Robin.
Robin.
Katie Robin.
Yeah. Anyway, so we want, we, so, so we need to inspire folks to pitch in, to help in everything, whether it's the dance, whether it's the parade, whether it's raising money, whatever. We need for you to participate actively. I see a lot of folks here who have constantly participated in building their community, whether it's joining, you know, a commission, or working on school committees, or civic organizations. They're in there, and they really have helped build this community for what it is today. And I appreciate that very, very much. So once again, the band shell, a band shell, cheese. The Fourth of July should be Thursday at 6:00 PM at 7333 Russell. So please join us if you care to participate. We really would appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Elliott?
I was going to make a wisecrack, but I'm not going to.
No, no, you need me.
I echo what's been said about, about the parade, and I, you know, we've marched or rode, or rode our bikes in it for the last seven or eight years, and it's been, it's been enjoyable, and more enjoyable every year. And I think what, what was, was noteworthy, and it's been every time, is there are a wealth of children. I mean, and, and it absolutely speaks to the diversity and the homogeneity of our community when you walk down the street and you see the kids, and the colors and the sizes. And what I find incredibly beneficial to the city, to our future, to the demographics, to our school system and everything else is, is, you know, you've got candy, you've got treats for the kids, and it's not, they don't swarm you, they don't, they don't run you over. They're polite, they're cordial, they respond when you talk to them. It's absolutely a pleasure. I wish I had as much time to talk to the parents as I did to the kids, except that it's been my philosophy, as I get older, that the more I can hang around the young kids, the younger I'll stay, so I'm going to keep doing that. But it was enjoyable, and I think one thing about it is, is, I talked to my sister after the parade, and she said that over the course of the last seven or eight years, it's the one most enjoyable. And we've talked about it before, but, but there were a lot of interesting floats, a lot of people presenting interesting voices. And I think what she liked so much, and the volunteers that pick up the mantle for the people that have put in their, their time, she should keep in mind that what they're looking for is about every fourth or fifth float to have some sort of band, some sort of music, because it gets everybody charged up, gets them fired up, and keeps everybody moving. So it's just a hint, whoever takes it over, the more music, the better. So that's it, and I echo Edwina that it's a crucial part of our community, and, you know, it's not that we make the news every, every Fourth of July, it's the number of people that show up to celebrate with us, and I think that's a testimony to what we've done and what we want to do in the future, so let's keep it up.
Thank you. I have just a few brief comments. I wanted to remind some folks, I've talked about this before, that I belong to the Regional Council of Mayors. They meet on a monthly basis. These council of mayors, about 40 of them around the region, sit and work on issues that affect our cities, and it's a nonpartisan group. Just recently, with the events that have transpired through Baton Rouge and through Twin Cities, we met just a couple of days ago, and the mayors of Falcon Heights and St. Anthony, and actually even Chris Coleman from St. Paul, were there to discuss the recent things and what we could do as mayors in a leadership capacity for our communities under this light. And I just, I had some comments I wanted to read. "The incidents in Baton Rouge and Falcon Heights over the last week have been tragic for the country, and for us here also locally. Our thoughts and our hearts go out to the families of those who were slain, and it's important for all involved that these tragedies are fully investigated. While people have opinions on what may have occurred, it's essential to know all the facts associated with these incidents before passing judgment. People must not resort to violence in response to these matters, but rather continue an open dialogue that provides a framework for the common good of all members within our communities and within our country. Our thoughts and prayers also go out to the city of Dallas, the Dallas Police Department, and the families of the slain and injured officers as they suffer from other senseless tragedy. Our staff at the city of Richfield, we work very collaborative with our community to address the concerns and problems that may arise, and we look to solve them effectively and efficiently. Over the last year, our police department has been focusing on training officers in de-escalation and decision-making strategies. This training provides officers with additional tools to help resolve high-stress conflict situations that officers face on a daily basis. That training is continually evaluated and refined in order to better serve our community." And I want you to know that the mayors have decided to get together and figure out ways that we could provide even more training together, and I have brought this to Chief Henthorn. The city of St. Paul will invite us to train with them. Other cities will invite other cities. We are working really hard on these issues. I just want people to know that we care and we're concerned. Comment?
I'd just like to add to the comment that Richfield has hosted de-escalation classes and probably will do so again, and invited other agencies in to participate with us.
Yeah, we have. We've been ahead of it. Well, thank you. And thank you for all you do for us, and thank our police officers. We care about them. The consent calendar, city manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on these items is necessary. Tonight, there are about five items on consent, starting with item A, consideration of the approval of a resolution granting site plan approval and variances to allow conversion of the former Lariat Lane's bowling alley at 6320 Penn Avenue to office space. Item B is consideration of the approval of requests for two separate temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor licenses for the Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post 435 located at 6501 Portland Avenue South for their bike night-out event scheduled to take place on July 20th, 2016, and August 17th, 2016. Item C is consideration of the approval of a resolution appointing election judges for the August 9th, 2016 primary election and November 8th, 2016 general election. Item D is consideration of the approval of the award of a contract for the 2016 Seal Co. Project of Pearson Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $112,646.30, and to authorize the city manager to approve changes in the construction contract up to $100,000. And finally, item E, consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing and directing the condemnation of certain real estate easements and other rights and interests for the purpose of the expansion of the parking lot serving the Richfield Municipal Liquor Store located at 6600 Cedar Avenue. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed? Calendar has been approved. We have the next item, Councilmember Howard.
I have a public hearing and consideration of a resolution regarding the removal of an easement related to the sight line.
Madam Mayor, can I just interrupt for a moment? I think procedurally, we may have skipped over the approval of the agenda.
Oh, did we? My fault.
Yeah. Just want to make sure we catch that.
Council approval of the agenda, as it stands?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed? Agenda's been approved. Thank you.
I'll do a do-over here. Public hearing and consideration of a resolution regarding the removal of an easement related to sight lines at 76th Street and the adjacent railroad tracks. On December 5th, 1947, the village of Richfield and owners of property immediately east of the railroad tracks at 76th Street entered into an agreement to reserve a sight easement overly the westerly 30 feet of the property. This easement required the owners to keep this area free from, quote, "shrubbery, shrubbery buildings or other obstructions which may interfere with the view of traffic approaching the railroad crossing on 76th Street." Railroad was not part of this easement. It is unclear why the city entered into this agreement with the private owner of the property. Staff has not found any similar easements along the railroad tracks, nor have we come across easements between railroad, between the railroad and private owners. In approximately 2011, automatic warning devices and crossing gates were added to this crossing. Stated purpose of the sight easement is to, quote, "to daylight the grade crossing of 76th Street," unquote. The installation of the crossing gates makes this easement unnecessary. Notice of this hearing and the city's intent to vacate the easement was sent to the railroad. No comments have been received.
Well, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone like to come to speak on this issue? Anyone would like to come to speak on this particular issue, the public hearing regarding this railroad crossing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Public hearing is closed.
And so my motion is to approve a resolution vacating a sight easement at 76th Street and the adjacent railroad tracks.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed? The motion carries. Councilmember Garcia, you have the next item.
Oh, ready? This is consideration of a resolution for site plan approval for a community band shell at Veterans Memorial Park. The city of Richfield has long planned for an outdoor performance facility. In 1985, Veterans Memorial Park Master Plan identified a desire for the 1,500-seat amphitheater. The Richfield 2020 Visionings Project Report of 2001 identified a desire for an amphitheater to support an expanded summer concert schedule. And in, on June of the 23rd, 2015, the city council did approve plans for the construction of a band shell at Veterans Memorial Park. Since that time, the city has continued to study the site soils and has determined that construction of the band shell at the location near to the ice arena would be less expensive. This location is also further from the adjacent pond. The attached revised plan show the new location and revised orientation of the proposed band shell. And, let's see. A public hearing was held before the planning commission on June 27th. Number of people spoke, and the planning commission did recommend approval of the site plan, and with a stipulation that a professional noise study be undertaken prior to the issuance of a building permit. And, let's see. Okay, before, the one thing is that, that the band shell, you know, we've been working on this for over three years. And I'd like at this time, you know, to turn it over to our staff, so we can talk about the, you know, the study of the noise. That, and, I know we're going to engage a professional expert to do this, so...
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Garcia, before Kim comes up and talks about the noise study, I just want to touch on a few of the things on the land use approvals.
Good.
And some of this was mentioned, but I just wanted to make, make it clear. The city council did grant all of the land use approvals for this project in 2015. Since that time, the only changes are relocation of the band shell 74 feet further away from the delineated wetland, and a reorientation from facing south-southwest to facing southeast. I also wanted to differentiate that land use approvals are a, it's kind of a tighter box. It's a, it's a very specific thing. You've had many opportunities to talk about architecture, to talk about feasibility, to talk about cost, to talk about all of those things, but this is the land use approvals where we're addressing things like, really, we're addressing two things. We're addressing the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, and what's found in those two documents. As staff reviewed those documents, we found that all of the zoning requirements... As staff reviewed those documents, we found that all of the zoning requirements such as setback, the height, the bulk, the lot coverage, the impervious surface, the parking, all of those things that we always look at and oftentimes discuss are there. We're not discussing them to great detail tonight because, really, those are non-issues as they are met. The, the two things that are really for consideration are the noise issue, and that is contained in city code, and then the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does, is worded a little more vaguely than the zoning ordinance. It talks about whether or not a project is consistent with the various elements and objectives of the comprehensive plan, which is a long document, and other, other things such as energy conservation. It's a, it's a long list. But again, when staff went through the comprehensive plan in relation to this proposal, we found that there were no inconsistencies, and after reviewing it themselves and based on input obtained at the public hearing, the planning commission also came to that same conclusion that this proposal does meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. So with that, I would hand it off to Jim to talk about some of the other issues.
And, you know, I'd like to thank staff too, because I know that they're very, very, you know, they, they do their diligence when it comes to, you know, to studying these issues and really making sure that, that everything is balanced well. Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor and council members, I'd like to ask the technician in the room to put on this graphic here that I have on the computer. There you go. Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. Is that better? All right. So, before we continue with the discussion, I thought I would, for the members of the audience and the TV audience, just show the site plan so that you can see the orientation of this. So the first slide here is where the original location for the band shell was, and of course, you can see that it's facing the northwest, pointing towards Columbus Avenue. The next slide is the new orientation, and the impetus for this location first started out to be cost. We wanted to try to find soils that were better. That was the main reason that our project wasn't going anywhere. The soils were just too cost prohibitive. So we, we put it in this location, and the soils were better, but once we put it there, we decided, hey, this is a better site. So as you can see, it's oriented to the southeast, and it's pointing actually towards the BND market there, and it's a little further away from 66th Street than its previous location. We also like the fact that it's closer to the ice arena and meaning the parking that's there, as well as the restrooms that are there, and it's less costly to put it there for, it's less impervious surface that we actually have to add, and you'll see that in the next slide. So this is a slide that shows the, the, the new location, and the structure up to the top of the screen is the ice arena, and then you see the service road curving around, and the, the pathway to the, to the new facility is joined to both of the existing trails, and one of them has to be moved a little bit to make way for it, because there's some, a number of underground utilities that we have to kind of work around. But you can see how it is much closer to the parking lot, and we put in a bump out on the service drive so that people can be dropped off there and that have mobility So I just, that's all I wanted to say about the site, and do you have any questions about the site?
Councilmember? Council, not from the audience.
Just a question on the sound monitoring, so everybody understands how, how that does. When the monitoring's done, what are they going to do with that study? And then, how do they know that it meets the requirements and that? So you could go over that.
Sure.
Because I know I was at the planning commission, I did talk to Aaron earlier, and I just want to make sure that everybody else understands what they meant in that meeting, if hopefully we capture that.
Good. Thank you. So, couple things. First of all, you know, we had this planning commission public hearing just two weeks ago. It was right before holiday season, so I, I tried to contact a number of, of sound vendors, I'll call them, and got ahold of two of them. I'm waiting, report for my third one this week. But the first one that I, I talked with, they had done this before for the city of Shoreview, and they actually, it was on a band shell project. So they, they actually set up some speakers, that sort of thing, and they, they simulated what a concert would sound like, and then they provided measurements, that sort of thing, in the surrounding neighborhood. Actually, this was on Snail Lake, so it was the property owners around Snail Lake. And it was quite an extensive project, and what I learned after talking to them is you have to really sit down with them and talk a little more of what you really want. Otherwise, the sound study could be quite expensive. So, you know, I know that it can be accomplished, but I think it requires additional time with them to actually set something up that would actually work and would be done with, you know, in an inexpensive way, but also would give us good credible results. And I talked with the second one just this afternoon, and same thing. I mean, they, they're going to send us a proposal, but there's a number of factors that, that could reduce the cost that I want to go over. So, you know, what I, what I would foresee, Councilmember FitzHenry, is that, you know, we would do this sound study and then come back to the council with a report or with a presentation of that, and that would be part of, you know, as we proceed forward with this, if, if you're telling us to do that tonight, that would be done at that time. I, I would suppose our next step would be to hire a construction manager, so we'd bring a contract with you, to you at that time, and that would be the time when we, we could present a sound study. With that said, I'd like to talk to you a little about our original noise plan. Okay? So the original noise plan was that we would do two things. One, we wouldn't have performances beyond 10 o'clock at night and before 7:00 AM in the morning. So that's one way that we're controlling the noise and being respectful for the neighborhood. The other is that we would have, we would follow our own sound ordinance, and what that is, is it's referenced by guidelines that the MPCA puts out to make sure that there's control of the noise in, in this type of situation. And so, we know what those parameters are, and I can go over that if you'd like, but basically, we know what the threshold is of the sound that should be coming out of here. And the thought is, is that we would have a staff person there at all times, so we wouldn't book any concerts here unless, we, a staff person would be here. We wouldn't have just any concerts, you know, without that supervision. And so we have the ability to monitor the sound there on-site and the ability to control the sound of the group. And, you know, that's similar to how they do it at Lake Harriet, and, you know, I believe that we're going to be able to manage the sound of this thing with, with that type of control. And so I wanted to be clear on that. That's still our intention, and that's how I think we, we proceed, and we can, we can get a sound technician or a sound study in just to make sure that the sound's not going to be too great, that sort of thing, but I, I think that really the, the key to your sound control is through monitoring it and having the control and the expectation of the performers that are coming, that the city has a certain threshold that it won't go over, and we're going to enforce that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I speak just to that specific point on the sound study? I, I just wanted to call back to when we had, this was before us, a year ago, and we did talk about sound and how important it was for the community to have a voice in, you know, what kind of time of concerts, kind of as you've laid out, and that still holds, and it is, I think, a very important and positive part of this plan to have city staff, you know, at a, at these concerts. And what I sort of view as the sound study is a way to sort of provide our staff with more tools to make sure that as they're, as we're monitoring sound levels and respecting the community, that we have a better understanding of just how to do that. But I, I would just agree that it's the, making sure that we have a staff person on-site and we're, and respecting the community. That's really a key part, because whether we have the sound study or not, you know, if we're going to book a heavy metal band that cranks it up to 11, you know, you don't need a sound study to tell us that's probably not a good idea. You know, and those really aren't the uses that we've sort of heard are likely for, we're talking more about kids in the park and arts in the park, theater in the park and whatnot. But I, I just wanted to voice support for moving forward with a sound study. I think that gives us as a city more tools to better work with the community in terms of sound management.
Okay. Other comments? Other questions? It's back to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You can't, you can't raise your hand? You cannot talk during the meeting?
You know, one thing that, that Richfield, and I have to apologize because I took some allergy medication, so my mouth is just dry. One of the things that Richfield has got is two very important parks in Richfield, and we're very blessed to have them. One is Woodlake Nature Center, and that's really known as our natural park. We have coyotes, we have ducks, we have deer, we have fox, and we have birds, including migratory birds. If you, if you look at all the activities that Woodlake Nature Center offers, you would be surprised. It is a park that is used by kids around the Twin City area, because it is so rich in all it offers. It's got bird-a-thons, and you, and I don't know how many are conducted, I don't know if you know, Jim, how many bird-a-thons are conducted? So where, so where folks show up and they go out and, and spot birds and, you know, it's kind of like a, a nice little get-together and club. So we are very, very fortunate to have that. We are also very fortunate to have Veterans Memorial Park. Veterans Memorial Park is the flagship park of Richfield. It is a community park. It is not a neighborhood park. It's a community park. The band shell came about because it, it was community initiative that happened, and that's why it's came about, and it's been community-driven. Residents are the ones that brought up that initiative and are participating and driving So this is what we have at Veterans Park. We have a miniature golf. We have an ice arena where we have magicians play. We have a beautiful swimming pool facility, the farmer's market, a Veterans Memorial that is really enjoyed by, you know, almost any ceremony that veterans have, they want to stop by Veterans Memorial. And we have the Fourth of July celebration, which includes food, it includes, it includes, we used to have the Richfield ambassadors, we used to have so many things, and we have the Richfield fireworks. Can you imagine if, and, and I say that urban birds have grown accustomed to live in, in an urban community? Now, we have the Richfield fireworks. You can't have more noise than that creates. If we were to not have the Richfield fireworks, we'd have a lot of upset people in this community. It's a family event that we all enjoy, that we all appreciate. I mean, look at, look at the Fourth of July parade, and where does it end? It ends there at Veterans Park, and that's where people disperse and they go on about getting food and drink for their family and sitting around and visiting with neighbors. We are very, very blessed. So, Madam Mayor, what I would like to do is, I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for the site plan approval for a band shell at Veterans Memorial Park.
I'll second. Discussion? Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to speak for the people that didn't tonight, that they've made comments to me on the east side of Richfield, that the majority of residents I spoke to do not want the band shell in Veterans Park. The other comment was that we don't need two band shells, and we're talking about the one at the Lindale Gardens. And then the other comments that I received was whether they really got the money to finish it, and I think that's been an issue all the time, whether we're going to be able to have a good product and enough money to finish it. I will still stand on my appointment to NAC, which is the Noise Oversight Committee, and through the committee we've discussed this, and again, we considered this a non-compatible use for the band shell, being under the departure path that's three zero left. I would rather see it in other parts of the city that would make more sense where the noise, is it affecting it? But I have to at least state that since I am on the Noise Oversight Committee, and we've looked at it a few times. Like I stated in the meeting that we had at the planning commission, if we were to build a house there, it would be mitigated due to airport noise. So that's all the comments I have.
Councilmember?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I want to state a couple of things. You know, for one thing, I think the Fourth of July parade gives you a great opportunity. We had four volunteers that walked the whole parade route distributing cards regarding the band shell. More than 90% of the folks that received a card were supportive of the band shell. That says a lot.
Shh, no, quiet, there's no, I'll have to ask you to leave if you're going to comment.
And that's, that's impressive, because those are the folks that, that, you know, that these four volunteers were willing to disperse the cards and speak to folks and get their point of views. And that's, I think that's really important, and I don't remember the...
The duplicate?
Oh, yes, thank you. The duplicate band shell, if you, you can call Colleen Carey, if you want to speak to her regarding this. Colleen Carey has stated that it's not going to be a duplicate band shell. It is going to be a small area where you invite performing, whether it's bands or singers or, or poetry reading or whatever. It is not meant to be community-wide. It is not meant to be community-wide, and the reason is that once those units are built, those housing units are built, once the retail is built, there will not be enough parking space. Right now, Lake Winds is at full capacity and could use more parking. It is a band shell, and I believe that last time that we had an issue that it was stated that that would be kind of a little, just, just like what...
Simmons left.
The, the Richfield Historical Society does. They host little, little get-togethers, and that's exactly what will be at Lindale Garden Center. So I want to make that clear. You know, that's what will be built at Lindale Garden Center, and that's what we will, we can go and enjoy, and as we enjoy what is getting to be our downtown. So I want to make that clear that there is no duplication there. Thank you, Mayor. And I'll renew my motion.
Madam Mayor, just wanted to make a few comments.
Please.
I'll just make a few comments.
I'll just make a few comments. One, that I don't think a whole lot has changed since we were here a year ago. As staff has mentioned, we're, we're kind of talking about the same band shell. We're not talking about new city dollars that are expended. It's, the site plan has moved slightly away from the edge of the wildlife there, but, you know, essentially, we're talking about the same band shell, the same very modest band shell, you know, as, it was before us last year. And I just wanted to reiterate the main reason why I'm supporting it and what I find most compelling is, and it's rooted in my belief that we as a community needs places where we come together and be together. I mean, I think that's one of the things that makes Richfield such a special place, our sense of community, our sense of neighborhood. And this community band shell is a place for families, for kids, for our schools and our students to gather and enjoy music, have a good time. I just think of sort of the stated uses that we've heard, that folks that want to utilize a band shell, for music for kids in the park, for faith groups to worship in the park, for outdoor theater, for school bands. I mean, these are things that make our community stronger and tighter knit and are reasons that this makes sense. And I just sort of feel that this is, the band shell is more about we than me. You know, it's, it's more about us as a community coming together, and that's why I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. I also wanted just to make a quick comment, if I may. I actually have talked to Sue Sandall, Kim, and talked to me the other day, and I guess efforts to raise money are going well. So, but thank you because I know they've got a big team that's working really hard at that, and this is a crucial piece of this, and it takes a lot of work to raise money. I've done that before and several other, so I really appreciate the fact that you're working so hard, thanks to the group of people who are doing that. Seeing no further comment, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
I oppose. The motion carries. One nay. On the city manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't really have a report this evening.
Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
I better get these signed.
The motion carries. Seeing no further action, I call the meeting adjourned.